During the council meeting, if you would, please fill out a form. At this time, the mayor will call to order the regular city council meeting for 6:00 PM Tuesday, October the 7th, 2025, in the City Council Chambers 201, East Nash Street, Terrell, Texas. Have with us on the dais this evening District 2 Donna Renee Anderson, our Deputy Mayor Pro Tem. Also have District 3 May Ronnie Velazquez and District 4 Stephanie Holmes Thomas. We do have a quorum. Not with us this evening, but excused is our District 5, our Mayor Pro Tem, Phil Robinson. So we also have our interim city manager, Mark Mills, and staff here. So we'll continue with our meeting. At this time, I'd ask that Pastor Ben Weems from The Rock Church, please come forward. He's going to lead us in invocation. If you would, please stand, remain standing for our pledges.
Shall we pray? Lord, we thank you, Lord, that this is the day that you have made. We're going to rejoice and be glad in it. But we thank you, Lord, that we're able to call upon your name in times like these. God, I ask that you would touch our city council, God. Your word says that where there's counsel, that there's wisdom and there's safety, God. I ask that you touch them, God. Be close to them, lead them and guide them, God. I ask you, God, to touch our mayor, God, as he leads this city. Let him have full of wisdom and knowledge and understanding. And I ask that you be a light in this dark world. It seems like this world is getting darker by the day. Lord, your church and your light is getting brighter by the hour. God, I ask that you touch us. God, let Terrell be a beacon of hope, a city that's set up on a hill that can't be hidden. I ask you, God, to let your spirit move upon us, God. Let there be safety in Terrell, God, peace in Terrell, upon our homes, upon our families, upon our schools, upon everything that your hand is upon. God, I ask that you touch us, lead us in God's with your wisdom, your knowledge and your understanding, and use us for your glory. In Jesus' name. Everybody say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Ben, if you would, please.
Pastor, pastor. Look at my dear following and the footsteps of your father.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations. We want to say thank you for the service that not only your father has done in the past, but that you'll be doing in the future.
Yes.
One of the things we like to do in the city of Terrell is be the leader for not only the Kaufman County, but also in the state and in the U.S. So one of those things that we do is we lean on our faith-based communities to make a difference for this community. We ask for prayers, pray for your continued service within our city, and pray that we do those things that are right for, not only for the city, but for God.
Yes.
So thank you for all you do. We appreciate you.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you so much.
All right. Next on the agenda is mayor and council, community recognition and events. Council, I want to take a moment and say thank you to everyone who attended our group meeting with our EDC, or Terrell Independent School District Board, our chamber representative, paddock board was there. One of the things that's unique about this community is that we're able to come together and help each other as we make decisions about the city of Terrell and include everyone. Those are the major boards that contribute to not only the funding of what's going on in the city, but are the decision-makers for the direction and the policies of our community. So thank you for everyone who was able to be there. It was a good meeting. We learned a lot. Does anybody have any thing to add?
This past Sunday, I visited with United Church of God in Christ on Hattie, South Hattie. They were celebrating the 10-year anniversary of their pastor, Pastor Arvis and his wife Melanie Miller. And so they've been pastoring the church for 10 years, and it was a joyful celebration. It was good to be there.
Wonderful. Anyone else?
Want to mention two things. One, appreciation to Dustin Connor, our emergency management coordinator. I know I saw him in here earlier, but in his responsiveness, along with our additional city staff, I recently attended a conference and training on emergency management preparedness, from conversations all the way from broadband to what a flood can look like, tornadoes, et cetera. And so it was very interesting. And I just, I, it's not my, my area of work, but I have a lot of respect for all of the planning and collaboration that happens with emergency management preparedness to, of course, prepare, make sure that our community is safe and our community members are safe as well. And two, I want to also mention that the 44th Annual Chamber Auction is on Saturday, October the 15th, from 5:00 to 11:00. It's an opportunity to get to know a lot of our small business, small businesses here in the community, and then also support all the work that the Chamber of Terrell does as well.
Great. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Also, we have Sue Fledging. You have someone that you would like to introduce?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce to you our new Risk and Safety Coordinator for the city, Hannah Gravely. So Hannah's here. She comes to us from the city of Allen, where she was a safety coordinator for about three years there. She has already been out, she started last week and has been visiting with our departments and is already digging down and making sure our staff is working safely, efficiently, and will also help us in HR on the risk management side with workers' comp and accidents and trying to keep our properties and our most valuable assets, our employees, safe. So I'll let you, let her introduce herself briefly.
Hannah, if you would, please come forward. This is your first time to address the council? The mayor and the council?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Floor's yours.
Well, I'm Hannah Gravely. I am extremely excited to be here and grateful for the opportunity. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. My voice might shake. I'm not going to cry, I swear.
You're fine.
But I am extremely grateful for this opportunity to be able to come in and be a part of an organization that is just about to take off for the moon. And to get to be a part of a team like HR with Sue and Erica is, so far has been phenomenal. After five days, I can say that hands down, some of the best HR I've worked with. So, yeah.
How much she pay you to say that?
$10. No.
I pay her every morning when she comes to work.
No, it's been fantastic so far, and everybody has been extremely welcoming. Some of the departments in, in the past, I haven't gotten the warm greeting and welcome that I've gotten here in Terrell. So that was a breath of fresh air.
Wonderful. Well, welcome to Terrell, Texas, and welcome to the organization.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Welcome.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda is to hear remarks from visitors. So I have a couple. Rita, Bane, if you would, please come forward. State your name and your address, and then three minutes, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Didn't know I was going to be first right out of the chute, but.
Sorry, I just called.
But my name's Rita Bane, and I live at 137 Birdsong Lane. And I want to talk a little bit this evening. I visited with Mr. Mills just a few minutes ago about Terranova and as it relates to the Nike missile base and the concerns about contamination at the Nike missile base. I provided a packet for you from the EPA that in April of 1985, there was a Mr. Willie, a school here in Terrell that's been named after him. He was an instructor that spent 34 years in the Terrell ISD. And his concerns were about some potential hazardous waste at that site. And the EPA came out and they, they had included that there was potential problems with the site to include some groundwater contamination by organic solvents, but, and some abandoned drums and a burial of a vacuum, vacuum tubes containing radon gas. As we know, radon gas is radioactive and can remain in the environment indefinitely. It doesn't have a half-life. The organic solvent that the military was using at that time at those sites as a solvent lubricant for the missiles, this organic solvent that they had mentioned in the abandoned drums could very well be TCE. And as a concerned citizen and someone that lives in that area, just overall, the concern of water being contaminated and then the site being contaminated, it is privately owned now. Before Terranova progresses, if we could mitigate any potential hazardous issues that are there and clean up that site if it is indeed toxic, and it very well could be, no one really knows. And if we could take a deep dive on that and do a Phase 2 environmental assessment of that site, the military, based on this, has done no remedial actions in this report that I've received. Much more to be gained in knowledge, and if we could consider the future of holding up on the initial plans to develop in that site at that, that was where Terranova was to begin. I believe the road was to go in off of Griffith at just adjacent to 1622 Griffith. If we could postpone until we know that that site is completely clean, and if it is indeed toxic, see that the remediation is done and that the site is cleaned. I know that sites up north have been cleaned up. The last was Topeka, Kansas, from this very same thing. Drums were found that contained TCE, and they did a super fund and cleaned it up in 2009. And that's all I have tonight. It's just a request, if we could, collaborative effort to make sure that this is done.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next is Matthew Farr. Is it Farr?
Farr.
Okay.
My name's Matthew Farr. I live at 1620 Griffith Avenue. I live directly in front of the Nike Missile Silo Base. And the further I've chased the rabbit holes, they get pretty deep. And I have found reports that say they have found it in the groundwater and soil. And then we have other reports that say they just have organic compounds, but some show that it is TCE, and some just say organic solvent. Well, if you do some research on TCE, it is organic solvent. There's a couple other that they use. There's another one with the abbreviation MEK, which is another organic solvent that does the same thing, basically, as Agent Orange. It attacks your nervous system, liver, all kinds of things. And I'm asking the city to have a third-party inspection done on the environment there with soil and water sampling, so we can get to the bottom of this and I can feel safe in my home. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. You bet. All right. Next on the agenda is public hearings and city council actions. The first one is a conduct a public hearing and consider a zone change request from single-family 75 SF 7.5 to Neighborhood Edge on approximately 1 and 1/2 acres of land in the Terrell Revised Block 26, also known as 505 Mount Olive in the city of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas, identified as Kaufman County CAD property ID 40531. This is going to be handled by Jana Wampler.
Mayor and council, I bring to you tonight a zone change at 505 Mount Olive. It's currently zoned, single-family 7.5, and the applicant is requesting that it be changed to Neighborhood Edge. The property owners are Webb Homes and Thomas United Project. The city has reviewed the application and find that this Neighborhood Edge zoning will comply with the use of the property. We sent 31 letters to abutting landowners, and we received one response, not in favor. This was presented to P&amp;Z on September 25th, and with an in-favor vote of nine to zero. If you'll turn over to page with our location map, page five, you'll see highlighted in red is the building that is there. It's a vacant metal building. It fronts Daniel Street and Mount Olive. It backs up to Daniel Street, excuse me, and fronts Mount Olive. The next picture is what the property looks today, and I'm going to show you a rendering that the applicant sent, what they'd like to do with the property. You go on with more information and detail about the ownership. I have a zoning map that shows in light yellow that the property is zoned in 7.5. The, the future land use is traditional neighborhood. Here's the buffer zone map. I have the list of all the property owners. And then on page 13 is a rendering of what the property looks today and what the applicant would like for the property to look like in the after condition. And I will pause, mayor, for any, for the public hearing, come back for questions.
All right. Thank you. So this is a public hearing. At this time, we will open the public hearing to consider any comments regarding a zone change request from single-family 7.5 to Neighborhood Edge. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this matter? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing, move on to 4.2.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we bring to you tonight ordinance number 3143, zoning change application, ZC 25-Dash-08, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas, amending Appendix A, Appendix 2 zoning ordinance of the City of Terrell, and changing the zoning classification from single-family 7.5 SF 7.5 to Neighborhood Edge NE on approximately 1 and 1/2 acres of property as located in Block 26 of the Terrell Revitalist Edition in the city of Terrell, Texas, 75160, Kaufman County, Texas, identified as Kaufman County CAD property ID 40531, also known as 505 Mount Olive in the city of Terrell, and more particularly described and depicted within the warranty deed attached here to is Exhibit A, and made a part hereof for all purposes, amending the official zoning map, providing a penalty, providing repealing savings and severability, providing for publication and an effective date.
All right. If you would, please come forward, Jana. So this is for a community outreach center? Tell us a little bit about this.
Yes, sir. The applicant is wanting to put a civic center in that will service the local, our community. So right now, this is the concept that they're wanting to do, and we'll have more information for you at a later time.
And it was a 9-0 vote by our planning and zoning?
Yes, sir.
In favor of?
In favor of.
All right, council, do y'all have any questions for Jana on this?
I just would like to recuse myself on this. I'm super happy to be approached about this project, and I'm on the director's board, so I just want to be full transparency. I will not be voting in this, but I'm very familiar with this project. It's been in this community a long time, and I'm just happy that I was even able to be involved to get this across the finish line.
Thank you, council.
So I can support it fully.
Thank you, council. Anybody else?
And it sounds like you've already answered the question I have. I, I also express similar sentiments as Councilmember Home Thomas, although I'm not recusing myself. I'm excited to learn more about like what services or event opportunity, what the space will be used for.
Right.
There's always a need in a community for places where our community members can congregate, and it's.
Exactly.
And it's led by efforts by the community, which makes it more special. So if, if today is not the time to hear about more, then I understand, but I would look forward to learning more in the future.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I look forward to hearing about it also. I've heard good things, and so I'm just looking forward to another avenue of watching members of our community provide services for the community.
Right. Absolutely. It's always needed.
All right. Is there a motion on ordinance 3143?
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 3143.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Donna Renee Anderson, our Deputy Mayor Pro Tem, District 2, a second from May Ronnie Velazquez, District 3, to approve ordinance number 3143 as presented. I will vote on this, this item. So all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 3-0. Next item on the agenda is 3 point, no, 4.3, conduct a public hearing to consider a zone change request from AG, AG, to Light Industrial LI on approximately 14.514 acres of property, also known as 401 FM 148 in the city of Terrell, Texas, 75160, Kaufman County, Texas, identified as Kaufman County CAD property ID 7635, 7611, and 7636. This is zoning change 25-14. Again, Jana.
Thank you, mayor. This is ASCO equipment. It used to be the Mitchell Borland Farm Implement there on FM 148. That is 14.5 acres. The property owner who bought from Mitchell Borland was Texaplex Properties. They're also the tenant who is ASCO equipment. The applicant is currently working on plans to remodel and build a replacement building for the dealership on the current parcel, which will continue to sell, rent, and repair heavy farming equipment and implements. Our office has reviewed the preliminary construction plan and the current application and find that each are conforming to the city of Terrell building standards. We sent out 14 letters to abutting landowners, and as of today, we have not received anything in favor or not in favor of the applicant. It was presented to P&amp;Z on September 25th with a nine-to-zero vote in favor, and I will pause for.
Thank you, Jana. Again, this is a public hearing. We will open the public hearing to consider any comments on a zone change request from AG to Light Industrial for this property. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this matter? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing, move on to 4.4.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we bring to you tonight ordinance number 3145, zoning change application, ZC 25-14, and ordinance of the City Council of the city of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas, amending Appendix 2 zoning ordinance of the city of Terrell, and changing the zoning classification from Light Industrial LI and Agriculture AG to Light Industrial LI on approximately 14.514 acres of property as located in the John C. Hale Survey Abstract Number 202 in the city of Terrell, Texas, 75160, Kaufman County, Texas, identified as Kaufman County CAD property ID 7611, 7635, and 7636, also known as 401 FM 148 in the city of Terrell, and more particularly described and depicted within the general warranty deed attached here to is Exhibit A, and made a part hereof for all purposes, amending the official zoning map, providing a penalty, providing repealing savings and severability, providing for publication and an effective date.
All right. Thank you, Greg. Jana, if you would, please come forward. So this is just a recommendation from the staff is that we approve, and it was a 9-0 vote?
Yes, sir.
For our planning and zoning. Council, do y'all have any questions on this item?
I do. So this property is zoned agriculture right now?
It's half in agriculture and half in light industrial. So we'll rezone it to light industrial to, to make sure. The application will come back before you because we're going to have to do some replating to put it all instead of the three separate parcels into one. But yes, it's going to comply and still exist for the same use tomorrow as it did today.
All right. Is there a motion on ordinance number 3145?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 3145.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Stephanie Holmes Thomas, District 4, a second from Donna Renee Anderson, our Deputy Mayor Pro Tem from District 2, to approve ordinance number 3145 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and a vote of those present. Our next item on the agenda is 4.5. We're going to postpone item 4. Do I need a motion to postpone, or?
No, it's on the agenda. It's postponed, Mr. Mayor.
So we, so there's no, there's no?
We won't need a motion.
Okay. Are we sure?
You can make one if you wish.
What do you, what's your recommendation?
Donna, I don't think so.
Okay. All right. Let's see. So 4.4 is the, I mean, 4.5 is the public hearing. Is there a motion to postpone 4.5?
I move to postpone.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a, a motion from Donna Renee Anderson, our Deputy Mayor Pro Tem, District 2, a second from May Ronnie Velazquez, District 3, to postpone item 4.5. Is? Did I get it right? I had Donna Renee, oh, did I say second?
I thought you said May Ronnie.
Stephanie Holmes Thomas, District 4, as second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and a vote of those present. Motion carries, and a vote of those present. Our next item on the agenda is 4.6. Conduct a public hearing to consider a specific use permit to allow use number 177, a hotel motel. The property identified as County Road 305 and Interstate 20 of the J.C. Hale Survey Abstract 202 in the City of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas, identified as Kaufman County CAD property ID 214379, 214380, 214380, and 198664, SUP 25-Dash-04. Jenna?
Yes, sir. I have a specific use permit that will be out at the crossroads development area, and it, the property owner, MTGA Development Corporation, the ground lease will be with Holiday Inn Express. This property owner has submitted an SUP application for Holiday Inn Express Development at the above location. The applicant is the legal owner of this vacant parcel and has complied with all the requirements of an SUP. The current zoning also complies with the use of the property as well as the City of Terrell standards. The applicant is currently working on an 87 guest room hotel with a 3,500 square foot freestanding restaurant on 2.62 acres. We, our office has reviewed the preliminary construction plats and a preliminary civil and architectural, and we find that each are conforming. Public hearing notices were sent out to six abutting landowners as well as a publication in our foreigny messenger. Our office has received one response in favor of the zone change. This application was presented to City Council, I mean, to PNC on September 25th with a vote of 9-to-0. If you go through our packet, you'll see the location map and where our pond is, it's right there, it's going to abut to that. So we'll have the Moby's, that'll be to the right, and then our park area is right around that. The next page is the zoning, which shows the retail. The next is the future land use. We have a buffer zone map, and then we have then our list of the abutting landowners. I did put in a couple of the, this was from Chipotle, that they were in favor of the development. The last page is a rendering of what they're wanting to do, a proposed look of the property. And I can be available for questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Jenna. So again, this is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing to consider any comments on special use permit to allow use 177 hotel motel on this property. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this matter? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing, move on to item 4.7.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we bring to you tonight ordinance number 3144, specific use permit number SUP 25-Dash-04, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas, granting a specific use permit under the provisions of Section 31B, SUP Specific Use Permits, Appendix 2 zoning ordinance of the City of Terrell, Texas, to MT/GA Development Corporation, Inc., a Texas corporation owner and KREA development leaseholder, allowing an exception to the provisions of Section 26 Retail, Appendix 2 zoning ordinance of the City of Terrell for certain property located in the crossroads at Terrell Phase 2B, identified as Kaufman County CAD property IDs 214379, 214380, and 198664, and more particularly described, tracks 1, 2, and 3, Block 5 of the J.C. Hale Edition, Abstract Number 202 of the City of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas, and depicted on the deed of trust attached here to as Exhibit A, and made a part hereof for all purposes, amending the official zoning map, providing a penalty, providing repealing savings and severability, providing for publication and an effective date.
All right, thank you, Greg. Jenna, if you would, please come forward. Again, a 9-0 vote?
Yes, sir.
For planning and zoning, and you said no one?
We've had one response in favor.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Jenna on ordinance number 3144?
I, I have a question
Yes.
On the rendering on the photo that we have that shows the PID.
Yes, ma'am.
And there's a pond next to that?
So if you'll go back to the location map, or the buffer map is fine. So you can see the southerly apartments are on the right, and then on the left is the, no, I'm telling, Magnolia Grove is on the right, to the left is the southerly. Those are where the application, the, I, I can't talk tonight, I don't know why, I took sinus medicine, but I'm okay. So we have the pond park, and when you come down going towards Interstate 20, they will be that first parcel that's right there on the edge that is around that buffer in the center of that buffer.
So are we planning to do something with the pond later, or is the pond just going to be the pond?
The pond is already a park.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. That, we also have to the north of the park, our Gold Star dedication in that area, we've got a walking path all completely around the park.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else? All right, is there?
I do.
Yes.
And it's going to be Holiday Inn Express, simple, similar
Yes, ma'am.
What we have over there?
Yes, ma'am. They are going to have a conference room in there, but it's not of anything the grander like what we had, you know, talked about in the past.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion on ordinance number 3144? I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Mayroni Velazquez, District 3, a second from Stephanie Holmes Thomas, District 4, to approve ordinance number 3144 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Ladies, how do you want to go?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? I think this is the first time that the mayor's had all women voting. That's pretty cool. Okay. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, and a vote of those present. Our next item on the agenda is 4.8, conduct a public hearing to receive comments for a specific use permit to allow you, use number 307, private party wedding rental facility. The property identified in the revised map of Terrell Block 714, Lots 3 and 4A in the City of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas, also known as 1407 West Moore Avenue, and identified as Kaufman County CAD property ID 41606. This is SUP 25-Dash-06.
Thank you, Mayor. This is another SUP. The applicant is wanting to put in an event center primarily for smaller parties. It's right across the street from the original Whataburger in the Brookshire Plaza. It's 1407 West Moore. It is between the transmission and the dental suite there in that, that building. The applicant is L.F.A.R. Family Partners, they are also the property owner, and the tenant will be Radiant Party Company. Her husband actually owns the transmission place. Our office reviewed the proposed application and find this use will conform to the City of Terrell zoning ordinance under a special use permit for a private party rental facility. We sent 14 letters out to abutting landowners, and we've received two responses in favor. We presented this to PNC on September 25th, and it received a 9-to-0 in favor of the SUP. If you go down, you can see the location, and I have a Google map that shows you what the property looks like today. It was at one time a mattress store. Then the next page kind of gives you a little sketch of where each is and the layout and the square footage. We have the location map, we have a zoning map, and as you can see, it is zone light industrial, so we'll take care of that zoning after the SUP. The future land use is retail commercial. We have the abutting landowner list with the buffer map, and then the in favor, and I can be available after the public hearing.
All right. At this time, we will open the public hearing to receive comments for a specific use permit to allow use number 307, a private party wedding rental facility for the property. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this matter? He before against? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing, move on to item 4.9.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we bring to you tonight ordinance number 3146, specific use permit number 25-Dash-06, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas, granting a specific use permit under the provisions of Section 31B, SUP Specific Use Permits, Appendix 2 zoning ordinance of the City of Terrell, Texas, to L.F.A.R. Family Partners, LTD, a Texas Limited Partnership by Jamel Associates LLC, its general partner, the owner, and Baltasar Hernandez, DBA, Radiant Party Company, the tenant, allowing an exception to the provisions of Section 29 Light Industrial, Appendix 2 zoning ordinance of the City of Terrell for certain property located at 1407 West Moore Avenue, Suite 100, identified as Kaufman County CAD property ID 41606, and more particularly described, Block 714, Lot 3 and 4A of the Terrell Revised Edition to the City of Terrell, Kaufman County, Texas, and depicted on the special warranty deed attached here to as Exhibit A, and made a part hereof for all purposes, amending the official zoning map, providing a penalty, providing repealing savings and severability, providing for publication and an effective date.
All right, thank you, Greg. So Jenna, so they'll follow the same guidelines as any wedding venue, right?
Yes, sir.
And what about alcohol service and?
If, if you'll turn over to the here, ordinance that is behind, you'll see that we have on page four and on page five what the, what is allowed and what is restricted.
Okay.
When you look at the restriction on Section 5, it says, donor and tenant, understand that the following uses are restricted, private gambling clubs, which include poker, slot machines, eight liners, and any other gambling, and then outside storage. And that's been the common theme with all of our event centers.
Okay. What, is there plenty of parking there for them?
That, that was one of the things that took staff and I a little bit of time to navigate through. What we're, they're going to do is when the dental office and the transmission are in business Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, there will be no events.
Okay.
They'll hold their events after hours where they have adequate parking to meet the fire code.
And I'm not opposed to the venue or the purpose at all, I just want to make sure that we've got somebody that's looking into all of the factors.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone else?
I.
I'll go ahead.
To add on to the parking situation, I had a similar concern, and I, I don't think I saw, but feel free to point out, Jenna, in the ordinance that's written out at this time, the closure during the week, like I don't want to prevent business from happening as, as usual for a local business, but at the same time, I am concerned about the parking because of where this building is located
Right.
And minimal parking, and then the in and out of vehicles, I mean, repairs, right?
Sure, sure.
Sometimes you may have a vehicle, you just can't move, and you have to try to
Right.
Move there, so it's
Well, they have their own restrictions, they cannot, they have limited parking that they can have those vehicles that are in service area, and then they have a rear area that they also pull, or, you know, they have, wreck or service comes in and moves those vehicles to the back. So they're not allowed to keep a stranded car in the front that, that faces Moore Avenue.
The automotive.
The transmission store. Yes, ma'am.
What, what teeth are in our current ordinances or policies or this ordinance in terms of, of parking? Let's say that we have, let's say maybe that three times in a few months, we have calls about parking issues, or there's accidents that happen, what would cause for us to raise a red flag to say, okay, maybe we, we gave too much leniency in terms of like the parking that's available there, and what maybe they planned or did not plan for? What would be our red flags?
Well, one of the things that will help us is that they're going to apply for permits. They'll, they have to do an initial permit, and they also have to have a peace officer on land, on property if alcohol is served. So that's one red flag that would draw to make sure that they have the adequate parking. Another thing is, we could go back into our ordinance and maybe put a line in that might help to reassure that we keep, you know, a lane of fire code, you know, available for, at all times.
So our current code will specify that there's no parking within the fire lane, and also that transmission shop, we already have codes in place that says we don't, that we do not allow outside storage. So if there is an issue with wrecked cars or cars that are being worked on that are currently being parked out there, and we had a conversation with the property owner when they came in about the SUP. I will say that the applicant went in and they did some upgrades to the parking lot. He was very helpful in trying to get this business in here, and we kindly reminded him about the outdoor storage and making sure that if you had cars staying overnight, that they would have to be parked in the rear of the building. So it actually helped for them to go through this process so that we were able to have some one-on-one conversations. But you already have those ordinances in place, it's just a matter of monitoring through code, code compliance.
And then because this is an SUP, I'm just looking at my, my steps here, looks like once we approve, if the SUP is approved, then it won't come before council, and it will just continue to, to go through the process through municipal development.
Right.
And it sounds like the team has had a conversation, has had ongoing conversations on
Yes, ma'am.
Here's where you may face some barriers, are you ready to, to work through these instead of, versus not having that conversation, and they make it through that process
Right, right.
To that point, and then find out, oh, we should have known X, Y, or Z.
If approved through City Council, then this application will go back over to our building official and our fire marshal, and they'll monitor all the, the changes and the work orders going on in the building as well as anything that's altered outside.
Okay. Thank you.
I was going to say, good work, because that was my first thing when I looked at this, like parking, I'm familiar with that area, but it looked like you already asked a hard question. And when I look at this building, can you circle around it? Is it a driveway all the way?
No, ma'am. There's a rear building that the owner uses for storage in the very back of the property, and, but that's not going to be available to the tenants. The owner keeps it, and I'm assuming it's for, you know, his care to the property.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? All right. Is there a motion on ordinance 3146?
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 3146.
I have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion from Donna Renee Anderson, our Deputy Mayor pro temp, District 2, a second from Stephanie Holmes Thomas, District 4, to approve ordinance number 3146 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, and a vote of those present. Our next item on the agenda is 5.1, discuss community dog park conceptual design and project development. Phil's going to be upset he missed tonight.
Yes, indeed.
Lynn?
Hi, Ms. Mayor, Council. We're going to attempt to present the doggy park, we're trying to confirm that it's in the presentation tonight. So while she's working on uploading that, one of the goals is to potentially install a dog park there at Ben Gill Park adjacent to the football stadium, and just do north of, I almost said I, but US Highway 8. of, I, uh, I almost said I, but U S Highway eighty. So one of the things that I want to make sure council has the opportunity to do is consider at least location, 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 and think through, obviously this is a discussed item, think through prioritizing the benefits of the particular location, not opposing or being concerned with the park itself being a great location for a dog park, but the actual location of the installation of the dog park. The other item I want to bring forward is, we do have a drainage swell in the adjacent area, so we gotta think through what the decision's gonna be related to events. So we're next to the football stadium, the football stadium hosts several events throughout the year. We also have, uh, the Jubilee, I believe, occurs in this particular area. So strategically, that, the value and benefits of that particular piece of property that we're proposing, or at least putting on the table, may need to be evaluated whether that's the determining factor of putting it in this location. One of the other things I'll bring up, if we don't find the presentation, I, I can share it later, is, I'm sorry? No, no, it's the, it should be, I can share it with you. We do have a, you're gonna? If y'all could bear with us just a moment.
Well, um, so as we wait for the presentation, I need to read into the record, uh, some comments by, or, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Phil Robinson for you, all right? He had asked me, uh, when he knew he wasn't gonna be here, but he saw this on the agenda. One of the things that he was concerned about was the fencing, so secure sturdy fencing at least four to six feet high, uh, to prevent dogs from escaping. Second would be a double gated entry, uh, exit to safely manage dog entry. I don't know if y'all have considered that or not, prevent escapes, uh, maybe separate areas for different dogs depending on the size, uh, again, to ensure safety and comfort. Uh, the surface material of the, of the park, safe, dog-friendly surfaces, um, again, he's concerned about the, the dogs themselves. Avoid gravel and sand which can air, be an irritant or ingested. Uh, ensure good drainage. I think you've covered that a little bit.
Okay.
go ahead, Glenn. I'll continue in a minute.
Okay, we can, you want me to control it or?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll dive right in. This is the aerial view of the location. It's a point five acre tract of property that we're proposing. Some of the things that you just spoke of, I'll, I'll just hit the highlights and then we'll get more intuitive if questions are asked. Traffic and safety, that was a priority. High speed, uh, vehicles traveling down U S eighty could run the risk of dogs deciding they want to chase cars. So that's, that's a funny item, but it's the truth. Noise, lighting, odor, barking, there's a lot of things that obviously when you have a pet, that's part of it and we do love our pets. Maintenance costs, it's going to require continuous maintenance, ongoing, make sure we fund it. Waste removal on a constant basis, these are things that are part of the maintenance. Land use conflicts, we talked about that a little bit earlier, conflict with potential stadium, stadium events as well as, uh, city events, chamber events, community events. Libelion rules, we're gonna have to definitely implement, uh, rules related to the location. Environmental concerns, I did mention the drainage swell in the adjacent area and runoff. We've gotta pay attention to that as well. And obviously you're potentially running the impact of erosion control. Design and safety must. You mentioned the fencing, we're recommending between a six foot or eight foot fence, depending, uh, deep guards around it and double gate entries for the benefits of accessing the location, dual surfacing to prevent mud and wear that could be turf, it could be some other product that would warrant, uh, easier maintenance and longer term care. Sanitation stations, some of the amenities, fountains, shaded seating, et cetera. Lighting always is a, a benefit. Rules, we talked about that. Parking and traffic, we talked about that. If there's questions at any time, please stop me. Again, here's some of the pros we'll talk briefly about. Affordability, it's a quick bill. A point five acre dog park is a small park. They're typically designed for neighborhood parks, not necessarily identified typically for a community park, but that's something you all can weigh in on. Obviously, there's flexibility on the layout. It's a good pilot to see where we go from there. Cons, fifteen to twenty-five dogs approximately for that particular size, location, turf wear, obviously, we talked about that. Noise and drainage. Recommendation, next steps, site reconnaissance. Let's make sure this is the place that, uh, the citizens and council would prefer, uh, the location of this facility, making sure there's great sidewalks and utilities and no interference or impacts, uh, related to highways in the adjacent area. Traffic safety, maybe potentially put up screening if this is the location around that, uh, as well as a barrier, maybe a fifteen to thirty foot barrier between the, the highway and the, uh, dog park. Our budget, that's, that's one of the things we need to make sure we plan for and coordinate and there may be opportunities for grants or sponsorship or potential volunteers that would want to assist with this particular project. And again, we did talk about maintenance. This is just a random, this is not to make a decision on, obviously, or to sway one way or another, this, just some of the options that, you know, you can take a look at and say, do I like this? Do I do not like this? Or do we want to look at something different? We did put in the specs, typical specs, which include whether there was change to go with a thirty-six inch height to seventy-two inch. So that's what the structure would look like. That's your standard, if it's rod iron fence. Some entities go with chain link fence. Our recommendation would be rod iron. It would really look appealing, especially adjacent to the stadium close to the highway. Here's some cost breakdowns and obviously this project wasn't done alone, it was team effort between Rayland, Demeter, and our team. Here's some rough costs. We anticipate perimeter fencing, about forty-five K, entry gate, ten K, there are so. Shading, twenty-four K. Open play area, drainage and grading, ten K. And again, let me reiterate, these are O P C C's opinion of probable construction cost. These are not hard costs. So once we move farther in the process, then we'll get to the hard costs of everything related. So we're estimating right now, we're looking at about a two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar investment. I do have a tentative schedule. I created this schedule for a twelve month plan. Obviously, this can be reduced down to six months depending on how aggressive we want to move forward, but this is the slow process. In, in those steps, you've got discussion and planning, which we're doing now, design and budgeting, permitting and procurement, construction, and then an opening. And we've got all the scenarios broken down in each phase. And I'll open up for any questions or comments.
I, I guess, one of the things I, I would be interested in is if you go with a half an acre dog park, um, would you be able to expand it easily to an acre or you gotta find another location?
You would have to find another location, is my recommendation.
If we, if we use that location, but if we had an area that had an acre when we divi- meant we built a half an acre, we could expand it to an acre.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, all right. Just something to consider as we move forward. On, on, um, our Mayor Pro Tim's, uh, list of questions, I think you've hit most of them, I'm gonna forward you his email so you can read them, uh, and, and consider those and maybe give him a call and talk to him directly.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody here have any question?
I do. Based on communities, our size, is this pretty much about the size we need for a dog park?
In a neighborhood, yes.
Oh, for a neighborhood.
For a neighborhood.
What's the recommendation for a community?
Typically, acre plus, upwards of acre and a half, so, or larger.
I got a question. Are certain dogs banned, like pit bulls or, I mean, or is it, is it, 'cause I don't know, I mean, I, I'm asking so we know.
Not.
Well, wait, I know, but if, can you do that? Is it legal to do that as we move forward with this process? You know, I'd hate for a, a dog to create an issue that we shouldn't, that shouldn't be there, which?
I don't have an answer for that.
I could give you some guidance, Mayor. You couldn't be breed specific. If, if it was considered to be a dangerous animal, then, then yes, you could certainly ban them if, if they're a dangerous animal. Not all pit bulls, for example, are dangerous, uh, if they're, but you know, if, if, if it's found or if, if an animal has a propensity for being dangerous, animal control could look at that and say, this animal can't be here. Indeed, if it's a dangerous animal, we can have provisions in our animal control ordinance to where we could have a hearing. In fact, we had one today as a matter of fact, where if an animal is found to be dangerous, then they could either be, on the one hand, if necessary, humanely destroyed or permanently banned from the city.
Okay, well, uh, just something that we need to.
Something to consider.
Rayland?
Um, you are building this within a public park.
Yes.
So the same rules would apply in your public park as your dog park. So currently you don't restrict, uh, people from walking their dogs through the park or et cetera. So you're, based on the location, you're actually looking at some additional regulations. And just to remind city council, you also have a dog park that is slated for the crossroads location. And I will just tell you from the research that we've done, communities our size, um, one dog park is pretty rare, two is unheard of. So, um, just to kind of keep that in mind.
And how big a dog park are we talking about out there at Crossroads again?
It, it's gonna be, again, about the half acre to one acre. Yeah.
So we, we already have the plans for one. We already have the plan for one out by the crossword.
Yes, it is being worked into that design.
And? So why are we doing another one?
This was a, this was a request by a council member, yes, to look into it. Again, uh, council, what I would say is we continue the discussion and, um, I don't know, I don't know that we knew it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the dog park.
And that has to do, a, a large percentage of the amenities as well.
Okay.
Design, amenities, it can get very costly.
Well, I don't know why you would build something that wasn't, uh, useful and shaded and had all the, the bells and whistles, is if you don't, you're not gonna get use out of it and that's the whole purpose of having it. So, um, go ahead.
You know, I, from what I recall, um, there was a conversation about having one dog park and somehow with the, a, a development agreement that came forward recently, um, somehow we had the conversation about a second dog park. From the minimal research in terms of, um, the size of a community and the acreage for a dog park, I found that, um, for a size of, of twenty-three thousand people in a community, usually it's, yes, one park and it can go anywhere from point five acres to three acres, um, with like two acres being the average size for the amount of, of, of population. Well, I, I previously had a dog, um, we used to walk just around our community parks and that was sufficient for us. I had a small dog. But in talking to, like, just individuals in the community, in our community and in our, outside of our community, um, those that do take their dogs to parks really stressed, um, not having a small space, but having ample space for the dogs to move through, having that separation. And then going back to what the mayor said, like, having the bells and whistles in terms of, um, if you're gonna have a dog park, make sure you have a, an area where they can wash off, because when they get in the vehicle, if it's for some reason been, been muddied or something, then, um, you know, or a place to drink water, uh, maybe some tunnels for the dogs to go through. And then also maintenance of the park, like, well, what's the point of having a park? Similar to like, what's the point of having a playground if you can't even get on the playground? So making sure that there's enough maintenance that goes in and, and keeping in mind, like, whether that happens or whether that we can't control, um, that will require that maintenance. So I'm in, I, I would prefer, um, based on that feedback that I've heard from individuals who take their dogs to dog parks, plus, um, feedback and concerns that I have from existing community members, not only in District Three, but the City of Terrell of, there's still work to do in our other city parks, um, that also deserve continued maintenance in additions to those parks, um, some that are within our neighborhoods, um, in walking distance to our community members where they could also walk their dogs. My preference is to have one community park. And if, I guess my, my, my question here, I'll end this with the question is, um, the development agreement for the park, the dog park that's supposed to ha- happen at the crossroads area, is that something that's finalized or is that something that we have the opportunity to, to change if we're looking at, if, if the question now is where does the dog park go and how big do we want it to be?
No, I, I believe with the development agreement that we have, um, it's just for a park design and that was part of their initial plan, was to go ahead and include the dog park. I think one of the main reasons is they were proposing it in that area is just because of the number of multifamily in that area. It kind of feeds to the, uh, the residents that you're serving in that area. I think Glenn did a great job of kind of letting y'all know it's more than just installing a fence and calling it a dog park. So there, there's a lot more to consider, um, and so.
Really, the, the crossroads isn't funded through the city, that's the developer. Putting it in?
It's the Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant for the crossroads park. And so we have development fees that are going in directly to pay the city's portion of that park design and construction.
But, but if we built one at Ben Gill, that's, that's all on us.
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, okay.
Are there any opportunities for any kind of grants or anything with the one we build by the stadium?
We'll definitely be glad to research that for you. Glad to do some research.
Okay.
More things, the maintenance cost, is that included? Is this, just to build out the two sixty-seven?
That's correct.
But what would the maintenance be if you had to guestimate annually?
It's, I think it's on, you know, it should be broken out, yeah. So it's on, to the right here, so that's two staff, two staff.
Two staff, okay, I got you. And, um, parking, are they just gonna utilize the parking that's already there?
Yes.
No additional?
Councilwoman, on that one though, you gotta remember if we do it there, if it's a football game or it's a Saturday when they, you know, they're playing, getting ball there, you can't use it because there won't be any parking there. I think that's gonna create a prob- I, I think we need a, uh, a second site. We need a A and a B site and take all the considerations of, you know, events that are happening at the chamber or at the, um, football stadium and see, uh, what the consensus is of the, the council as to where they want to go with site A or site B. All right?
Mayor, I just, um, when, when I heard you say A and B, um, I'm envisioning, um, you know, Glenn, you coming back and saying, you know what, A or B, A or B may not be at the crossroads or maybe, um, beside the stadium. It may be somewhere else in Ben Gill Park. So I, I would be open to also having a, a, us looking at an area that's not one of the two that we've discussed because of that acreage size, um, that tends to be recommended. It would, if we could find something bigger.
Okay, all right. Good, thank you, Glenn. Does anybody have any other questions? And this will come back to us, um, at some point in the future. Yeah, some, some point in the future. Uh, again, I will show you our Mayor Pro Tim's, uh, notes and comments and then, then if you'll reach out to him, please. Our next item on the agenda, discuss proposed amendment to the Ninth Street Creekside Development Agreement related to the construction of sidewalks along Ninth Street, Ben Gill Park, uh, to Creekside Housing Edition. This is Rayland or no? Someone from Municipal Development will be speaking.
Mayor, council, um, we are standing in front of you to discuss, um, the potential to redesign the sidewalk that we had originally mined from Creekside Development down to do, do, do. Down to State, I'm sorry, I'm still getting used to my streets.
Yeah, um, let me do a review of the map real quick, and then that way I can... So originally, your Creekside Development Agreement, if you'll look closely here at the map, Creekside is supposed to build sidewalks everywhere that it is bred. So we were supposed to get sidewalks from Caulquit all the way up to Elm Street. So from Elm all the way to State and into Creekside, it would not be sidewalks. So if you look at the nineteen-hundred linear feet of sidewalks that they were proposing, we looked at alternative routes, which I believe are safer for people to travel than along Ninth Street, and use some existing sidewalks in place. And we could go from Caulquit, cut across to Griffith, all the way down to Walnut. We've got a section of Walnut that is missing sidewalks, and then we would connect to existing sidewalks and get all the way over to Creekside. It is an alternate path than having people come straight down Ninth Street. But based on the traffic, based on the limited right-of-way that we have there, um, we're just, and it would be the same linear footage of sidewalks, it would actually impact more.
So this isn't an attempt by the developer to not do sidewalks, it's just relocating the sidewalks is what, uh, we're discussing this evening. Yes, okay. And we think that this is a safer route?
Yes, so looking at the original design for the sidewalk project, um, just walking on site, right? Trying to walk down what would potentially be our sidewalk, there's just heavy traffic. Um, like Rayland had mentioned, that right-of-way, um, that we have available. It makes it challenging to have a straight shot sidewalk. Um, when you're looking at the current plan set, it meanders a lot. Um, we snake through going around utility poles, um, people's personal right-of-way in front of their, um, house, um, elevation changes. I, my personal recommendation is that it would be a safer, um, option to kind of reroute this sidewalk, um, and not have it all along Ninth Street.
So some of the arguments that I've heard from, uh, council members is that the very fact that it is a busy, uh, roadway is, uh, uh, the evidence needed for a sidewalk. What, what we're saying is we don't want any pedestrians on, uh... I know, but you're not gonna, I, I, I understand that the reasoning behind or thinking is that if we don't put sidewalks, then Ninth Street won't be used as often. But what I see kids doing is walking on Ninth Street in the street, uh, which is, to me, a dangerous thing for them to do, uh... And, and I understand the, the reasoning of relocating because it, we can tie it in and not have the issues, uh, related to putting the sidewalk in. But, uh, what I wanna know, is it possible to put sidewalks on Ninth Street?
It's possible, will it be what you, um, ideally imagine in your head as a beautiful sidewalk? Maybe not, um...
How, how wide are we talking about doing the sidewalks?
We're looking at doing five feet wide.
Five feet wide?
Mm-hmm.
Can we do five feet wide on Ninth Street?
We can, but it is a very tight fit. That's why we mean...
Oh, hey, and I appreciate your, I'm, I'm not, I'm not arguing one way or the other. I just wanna make sure that we have all the information we need before we redirect off of Ninth.
So the other thing to consider is when we go in and try to get the easements for the sidewalks, ideally, you would hope that people would want sidewalks in their yard. Um, there's a very good chance that you are going to look at land acquisition.
Indemnation.
And having a very hard time...
You know what? I don't mind doing it if it's gonna save a kid's life.
Right, but you, you do have several properties where you are encroaching really close to their front door. Um, you're, you're looking at a, a large portion of their front yard.
That's whether we go on either side of, of, uh, Ninth? Has there been, uh, thoughts about going, uh, well, you don't want them crossing, so that wouldn't work either. Would you, you need them to stay on one side or the other?
Yeah, we were, the, the best option is to stay on the west side of Ninth Street. Um, but there, there are a few properties, when we attempted this a couple of years ago, uh, we went out and just did the, the knocking on the doors, we had the exhibits. Um, you, you had a few property owners that were reluctant to want to move forward.
Out of how many?
You're really only impacting, I think, like thirteen properties. Um, we tried to do some meandering, you've got a lot of utility poles, um, but with the meandering, you're also going deeper into people's property. You just, you, you've got a lot of utility easements currently right there. It's a, it's a mess.
Yeah, no, I know, I know. Um, well, one, I'm glad that it's not the developer trying to get out of doing sidewalks. That's not the case, so we can cross that off. But I wanna make sure that we've looked at every possible way before we, uh, do the, uh, second option and reroute off of, uh, Ninth.
I think the, the main thing to realize here is the portion that the developer is building, the only portion we're asking for him not to build is from Griffith to Elm. Because that's as far as he was gonna go. He, he was never gonna make the connection all the way up to Creekside Estates.
Yes.
And that was because of the survey and the land, like, there, there is no room past Elm to do this. And so that's why staff, when we were looking at the map, if we're only going to go to Elm, Elm and heading left is not the path that you want them to take. So we looked at safer routes, um, and where, instead of going from Griffith to Elm, where could we apply those sidewalks and provide? Because essentially, you're not giving them a safe path between Elm all the way up to the development.
Uh, is there a way for us to get to Caulquit?
You're, you're going...
Without using Ninth?
You're, you're going, well, to get to Caulquit without using Ninth?
Yes.
We have gone in and look, you've got several existing neighborhoods where we have, um, sidewalk connections. And that's what Bree and Chris and I were looking at, is where can we put sidewalks within existing neighborhoods and propose that path? It's a safer path to go through the, through neighborhoods instead of major thoroughfares. Um, so you do have some within existing neighborhoods. It, it's going to definitely be a longer walk, especially for students. So we were still trying to give them a clear direction to get down to the park or the middle school.
I know that we're talking about the safety of the students, and it would be ideal if the students would walk on the sidewalks. However, and I know we want to break it and go on a safer route, but when school is out, the children are in the streets. There is no corralling that. And so we would like them to be safe while they're just concentrating on life. And I'm gonna be with the mayor, it's like, I don't want them on the street, but there are some parts of Ninth Street that you can't put a sidewalk. I've, I've driven down there, there are some homes, uh, the sidewalk would be there, like, five feet from the door. So, I don't know, Mayor, I don't have an answer, I just know that...
I think, yeah, I feel like I need to ride down Ninth Street and look at, uh, you know, the properties.
Mm-hmm, I saw a youngster on a motorized scooter, just having the time of his life.
Traffic, they don't care.
They stopped traffic and just kept going and, and was enjoying life, so...
Our biggest fear is to stop it at Elm if we're giving them a clear path. And then from Elm, we know that the State Street four-way stop is kind of a dangerous place to be. Um, so this is a discussion item on tonight.
Yeah.
Something we would really like for y'all to put eyes on and see.
I, I, I agree. Uh, yeah, I agree, it's a discussion item.
Even thinking about Ninth Street, it just like it's more visibility for our, our children. I mean, everybody's going up and down Ninth Street, so I thought that... But is that standard to have sidewalks five feet? Is that pretty standard in the community's name?
Mm-hmm, that's our new, um, standard, five foot. Once you start looking at older sidewalks, you get into those four foot, sometimes you get into smaller, but, yeah.
So it's the same distance when we look at the nine hun- nineteen-hundred eighty-eight feet? It's just, well, so where would it end if we go down Griffith? Up Walnut, where that yellow line is?
Yeah, so you would take a left at Griffith and then go right up Walnut. We would need to add a small section there on Walnut. And then you've got existing sidewalks that would take you all the way up to State Street.
Mm-hmm.
You'll make a right and then left into Creekside. So where the pale yellow is...
But they still have to cross over State Street?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna make sure I look at this route.
Um...
But that, that, where you're asking them to cross, is it, that's a dangerous intersection too, at West... Yeah, no, uh, here at, uh...
Walnut.
Walnut, the sidewalks are on the same side, so you would have a continuous...
Oh, okay.
That's when it crosses over State, Walnut.
Yeah.
For, for Ninth Street, um, because there is a lot of, when I say traffic, like, I... There are individuals that are walking and biking, um, there's individuals that are walking and bike, biking on Ninth Street already. Um, why not do a combination of like, um, sidewalk and like a bike lane? Um, what, what, is there any reason why we couldn't do, you know, a combination of, of walkability, rideability versus just focusing on a sidewalk?
When you start looking at, um, a combination use trail, you start getting into trails, which are standard twelve feet wide. So when you start looking at putting in trails, you're really talking about being at people's doorsteps with a sidewalk that, that large, um...
But I, I'm thinking, like, if you could do, like, it would not be one continuous sidewalk of the same size, but maybe there are sections where you do, okay, here's where we have the, um, say, five feet, but then it turns into like a different type of turf or goes along the, the road. Um, I'm just trying to find different options for, for side, the sidewalk or walkability.
Your existing right-of-way also is just your standard two-way street. So there is no additional space for even a bike lane to be added. It would be within your driving lane.
And the funds for the sidewalk, so I think I need to think about this, not from getting to the park to Creekside, but was the point of, the purpose of, of the funds and the agreement, I'm just trying to remember what, what that specifically states. Is it for walkability from Creekside over to a specific school, like...
To Ben Gill Park.
To Ben Gill Park, and it has to be from Creekside to Ben Gill Park.
I'm even thinking, like, when the developer agreed to this, I know they had to look at this section and this, and know what challenges they were gonna face, I just... Is this just coming from staff? Like, you think this is a safer route versus the developer's going, ah, now we're looking at that, it's a little...
This was actually a request, um, from the city. It was an original request from the city, and so, um, this is just staff. Now that we're to this point, and the developer is really wanting to wrap up his items, we're the one that, that's holding him up, mainly because, again, he's only going to start building at Elm because he recognizes he can't get all the way to Creekside. Um, so we're just trying to find a path forward for him to be completed, so...
Uh, so, I, I'm, I'm guessing probably what we need to do is drive Ninth Street. The council needs to drive Ninth Street, take a look at it, and then get back with the staff, um, and...
Yeah, 'cause if y'all have other routes, I mean, it's just our bird's eye view.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much. I, I meant, I, I think our goal, the goal was to be able to get, uh, folks from the Creekside Development all the way to Ben Gill Park and then on to the school, right? So...
Good idea.
Yeah. Okay, all right, if you would, get back with staff on that. Our next item on the agenda, discuss proposed amendment, oh, we just did that one, didn't we? Yeah. Uh, business items, uh, six point nine, discuss and consider annual special event calendar and nonprofit proposals for non-city sponsored events. This is gonna be Rayland?
So just real quick, um, we've got the chamber here tonight because they are our big helpers, and also Jessica, who puts on all of our markets, and so downtown is really, really busy. And, um, since we have made the special event application part of our process, I will tell you, we are very special and we have lots of events around town. Um, so we're really trying to streamline. One of these, uh, requests is the application has changed, there's a lot more detail that we need, and a part of this is our discussion and something for y'all to consider tonight. Uh, in your packet, I listed the four major events. So we do have a contract with the Chamber of Commerce to put on four events for the City of Terrell. So these are actual City of Terrell sponsored events. And those four for twenty-twenty-six is, uh, the Taco Fest. We want to combine British Bash, Mural Walk, the Car Show, we've got a lot of things that go on September, October, November-ish, and we think that if we bring all of those nonprofits together, we can have one big event at the first part of October, um, and then wrap up the year, uh, in December. Now, in the meantime, there are several other events that nonprofits put on, and we just, as staff, we need some direction from City Council about how y'all would like to proceed with those. Our first step was making the application, what appears to be a little bit harder, uh, to apply for a special event, but mainly it is so if you are asking the city for something, it helps us put a budget together. Uh, we put special emphasis on the public safety, making sure that the barricades and everything were accounted for. Um, so we do have, probably off the top of my head, I could think of two or three that in the past the city has helped in one way or another. And what we would really like to do is get some direction from City Council about how you would like to streamline that process. Uh, generally, if people are doing events, it takes about six to twelve months to plan. Um, if there are events where they are asking the city to sponsor a portion or all of the event, is that something that y'all would like to see just come forward as a business item for you? Is that something that you want to see during your budget prep? Um, so the ask tonight is that you agree with our twenty-twenty-six calendar. What I would like to have is a little bit of direction about how you would like to see requests coming forward for your sponsorship for events outside of the city, the four city events that I have listed here.
So, yeah, I, I would think that, uh, it needs to be part of our budget process, uh, so that way we have a dollar amount that we're considering for that year, right? So I would tell, um, whomever's requesting funding from the city that twelve months out, if it's not in the budget for that year, it's gonna have to wait till the next year before funding's available to them. That, that's kinda how we did it, uh, for our business, was we had to account for, uh, any support that we were doing in the community because we had, uh, so much request, we couldn't do them all. And the, the board needed to look at it and say, hey, is this something that we are, um, interested in funding? And then at what level, right? And I, I think the city should do the same. Um, that way, every year, we know exactly what it is that we're gonna be allocating for, um, each event. Now, uh, I don't see anything about, uh, the Juneteenth celebration on here.
Because that, that is an, a nonprofit.
Okay.
Who technically hosts that event, so that, that is typically a request of the city... So that, that is typically a request of the city helping to.
We fund, we, we fund it in some form or fashion, right?
Yes.
So I, I think it's unfair if we've done that in the past to say we're not gonna do it. So that would be the exception for us moving forward. If we have funded something in the past, uh, and we, what the council would need to know is the level of that funding, and if we wanna continue that as soon as possible, uh, so that we know and we've got that out of the way. Let's not get until, to June and decide, well, what are we gonna do with Juneteenth? Or if we've got a July Fourth event, I don't see anything for the July Fourth either.
We, we don't budget.
We don't budget? Nothing there? So anything that we have done in the past, uh, if you would, get that to the council and the amount, um, that we're funding, uh, so that we can look at those, uh, item by item and determine if we wanna move forward with that. Does anybody have any question or comments?
I like the idea of consolidating events in October. I also would prefer that if we have done something in the past, that we know what we're spending money for.
Will do.
Because, even though I like all the bells and whistles, we are in a fiscal climate that is lean. And it's not, we're relying on our own money. We're not going to have, there's no extra coming in, um, anywhere. So I would like us to see, be more fiscally responsible. And how much is, if we have done something in the past, how much is it? And, um, and do we have that? Is that in our budget? The, the, um, that's my only concern, is the money. Can we do that? And if we can consolidate events, that would be, would be exciting to have a series of, this is what's gonna happen. My only concern is what we've done in the past, we may not be able to do to the extent that we did for anybody, even for consolidation. Consolidation is one way of cutting down on cost. Um, so, um, that's my only, my only thing. If, and Juneteenth, you know, is Juneteenth. But, uh, just to see how much money, let's, let's have a budget for these events. And that way, we know that we're not going to break the bank.
So if it's okay with you, what I would like to do is go ahead and reach out to those agencies that I know you have funded items in the past. Um, we can definitely put together the budget. We'll know how much we spent, but if it's okay with you in communicating with them, you know, you're definitely on board for looking at supporting them for this year. But then I can go ahead and gather what that ask would be for this year and kind of talk about, you know, how we'll look at budgeting for fiscal year twenty-seven. So I just didn't wanna talk to anyone about possibly assisting with funding or how this might work. Um, but no, I can definitely bring you back past spending and then what the ask would be for this year.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I have additional, um, feedback. I appreciate you mentioning that, reaching out to those we funded, 'cause I wrote, reach out to those that we funded in the last, like, two to three years, right? But I, I envision a process where we say, here's what we are able to do in terms of funding. Is it people power? Are we being asked to provide, um, staff to help set up for, for an event? Are we being asked to, um, for us to procure, um, a tent and bathroom or additional trashcan stalls? Are we being asked to hand over a check so they can decide what it's going to be spent on? I think we need to have some, some parameters, just like in our own budget at our house, right, or business? We say, okay, here's how much I have, and I'm going to spend it each bucket, or what do I need? That way, I think it would be helpful for us to have some standardization in how we support events, but then also that would help those that are putting on events to figure out like, okay, well, maybe I need to spend a little bit more time in recruiting volunteers or asking for sponsorships in, in other areas, and how do I, 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 I begin to do that? Because I wanna make sure that we're, we're treating the events and community groups, um, similar, and being fair. Um, I also have questions about, um, like, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, to, to kind of separate things, right? Because we have, like, Taco Festival, and then we have, like, let's say, um, the Jubilee, which is, what I'm hearing is because it wasn't on the list that we don't.
Yeah, that is.
That's all chamber.
Sponsored.
All, all-chamber events. So if there's an entity that, whether you're a nonprofit or whether you are, um, as, as another government entity or, or business, and you want to host an event, if you're not asking for the city, you're still going to go down the same process you would to get your permits to, to host that event. But it's, it, the, the conversation changes when you're asking the city for any type of support, whether it's people power, whether it's us procuring, um, equipment or security, or, or we're handing over a check. That, that's when the process. So I, I would like to see some standardization and, and have some feedback on, you know, like, for example, Glenn's department, I know his staff works at events. So is that we're saying, we, we can't really provide staffing for events, but maybe we can provide funding versus staffing? So having a recommendation from, from city staff on what would be the best to do. And I feel like I have more to say, but I, I'll, as I continue to think through it in terms of being fair, but then also having a standardization process and what that dollar amount will look like, I, I can follow up.
What I will plan on doing is bringing this to y'all, um, towards the end of the calendar year, as we kind of look towards twenty twenty-six, um, the things that'll be coming up this summer and into next fall. And then a part of that will be how to handle those budget requests that y'all will actually want to start getting in the spring for next fiscal year. Because I think making some one-on-one contact with some of our nonprofits on, and getting their feedback on how can we make this process work to where we're helping you get your budgets together and your requests.
The other, one, one more thing. As we're looking at this process, something I've, I've, I've heard is, um, especially from businesses that, existing businesses that have, already have, like, existing, like, um, health permits or food permits, that then it becomes burdensome to go through that process, again, in terms of, like, payment. Um, so I would even be open to say if we can waive some fees for those that have al- already been through the process. And I think that would also help alleviate some of, of the burden, so I would be okay with doing that as well.
I think the key is, and if I could get y'all's support on this, the application does look different. But it's because we really are trying to gather the right information. Y'all, our events are very successful. We are getting more and more people attend, so those safety plans are very important. Like, where, you know, a few years ago, you had, like, a small crowd of people, and we called that a special event permit. Now we've got hundreds of people that are coming to these events, and, um, we're, we're not mean. We just want the fire marshal and the police department to feel good about the events that we're presenting to them. So having y'all's support on the new application would be very helpful.
I just wanna clarify, you talked about the four events. It's Mayfest, or the Taco Festival, the Christmas, well, tell me what those four events are.
We have, um, I'm sorry, we've got Taco Fest. And then we'll have the combined, um, everything in October, which will be your British Bash and your mural, mural walk will become one. And then you'll have December eleventh, that's your Christmas tree lighting, which is a downtown event, and then we still have the Christmas parade, that's Saturday. So that's why it says December eleventh and twelfth. So that's, that's essentially a two-day.
Please. And these items, I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt. It's in the air. These events that we're highlighting here are, are explicitly, is that the word I'm trying to say? Is only regarding the downtown area, is what we're focusing. What this was, this was just not the Ju-, the reason why we put Juneteenth on it is because it wasn't in downtown area, 'cause that contract was just about downtown. And that's all we focused on, downtown. We're working on the visitor guide, I'm not gonna lie to you. We're trying to get it to print, it was supposed to be printed a month ago. Um, that's the story of life that we live, right? And we're always behind, and we're just trying to nail date for the downtown area. Not so much the Juneteenth, or any, or July Fourth, or any of that thing. This is just for the Jun-, the Juneteenth. The downtown areas. I'm sorry, guys, I said, yes, thank you, thank you.
So, um, my request from Rayland or Allison or whomever is that those events that we are sponsoring, in other words, those are city events, make sure that the community knows about it, because there's a difference in sponsoring an event and supporting an event. But here's the problem with the, the perception, is that even though we're just in a support, uh, uh, mode, we're gonna get the criticism if we don't have enough police or fire, or, you know, it doesn't run well.
Food truck, or yes.
Yeah, so, uh, we need to be thinking about how we message that to the community and make sure they understand we're sponsoring these, uh, four events, and that everything else, um, if we're involved, it's in a support role. We're not, we're not the ones that are in charge, right? It's gonna be, it's gonna be a nonprofit that is, uh, handling the event, and we're just there, uh, in a support role. So, uh, figure out how we can do that so that we don't get any, uh, backlash from the community. And I'm, I'm gonna go out on a limb and tell you, we're gonna get it anyway. If it doesn't run smooth, it's gonna be a Terrell event.
Yeah.
So we need to be mindful of that.
The downtown is that we are essentially eliminating one event by combining British Bash and Mural Walk.
I like that.
But.
Perfect. I, I love the planes, trains, and automobiles. That's goo-, whoever came with that, genius. Okay, uh, good, thank you.
All right.
So, um, do we need a, a motion on this one? Are we going to approve, uh, the, uh, special event calendar and nonprofit proposals? What, what, what do you want?
You could approve the special event calendar.
Okay, let's do that, council. Is there a motion on six point one?
Do we need to specify this is, this is for downtown?
I would, I would.
I think so.
Yeah.
That is for downtown.
I thought it was regarding. Is there a motion for six point one?
I make a motion that we approve the four events for downtown.
Okay, here's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Donna Renee Anderson, our deputy mayor pro temp, District Two, a second from Stephanie Hol-, no, from Mayroda Velazquez, District Three, uh, to approve, uh, four events for a downtown area, uh, calendar, which include the May ninth, uh, wanna talk about it, the planes, trains, and automobiles on October the third, and two December events on the eleventh and twelfth. Right? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries on, and the vote of those present. Our next item on the agenda is discuss and consider resolution number two-two-six-four, a resolution of the city council of the City of Terrell, Texas, approving and authorizing the acceptance of a grant award from Federal Emergency Management Association, FEMA, staffing for adequate fire and emergency response safer grant program for the Terrell Fire Department. Dustin, congratulations.
So I stopped off at the bank on the way here, and I asked, I wanted to have a prop, so I walked in and asked for a couple of bags full of money, about five point seven million dollars. I got a few looks, so I just left. Charlie can deal with that tomorrow. Okay, so just a quick history, back at the end of June, June twenty-fourth, with resolution twenty-two thirty-five, we approved the application for the safer grant this year. We applied for the same grant last year and was not awarded. Uh, June twenty-sixth, we submitted our application, and then, uh, on the twenty-second of September, we got notified by FEMA that we had been awarded the grant, so we were in the first round of funding.
Congratulations.
So if you're not, uh, aware of what's happened in the last week, uh, the federal government shut down, and so all of our questions that we've sent to FEMA about how do we accept the award, uh, some specific questions about, uh, personnel and funding, uh, will go unanswered until the federal government is open again. The good news is, is that we get to proceed with our, uh, grant, uh, as though they were open, except we won't get any reimbursements until they're open again, so not really sure what that's gonna look like. Uh, the button to accept the grant is there. I logged in and looked at it the other day, it's there. I wanted to click it, but, you know, we figured we probably oughta wait until you guys accept it. I don't know what happens when you click the button. It may say, this was a joke, you can't do this, the federal government's not open, so, uh, we'll wait and see. Uh, the resolution before you tonight, though, is to accept the federal grant, uh, in the amount of five million, seven hundred twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents.
Counsel, imagine if we didn't have staff that worked as hard as they did on grants. This five million dollars would have to come from our taxpayers. And if you know anything about the grant process, it's not an easy thing, uh, to navigate. Connor, you did a fabulous job, man. Uh, and I wanna thank the council, I, I think I mentioned this last night at our meeting, for, um, reaching out to all of our contacts, whether they were in DC, whether they were in Austin, and help, uh, get this thing across the board. One of the things that I know is this council works very hard with not only the National League of Cities, which is the main, uh, group that, that, uh, gets together in DC, or the TML, which is the Texas Municipal League. We have council members that serve in different positions there, so thank you for that. And, uh, you get to, you get to the, talk to the folks that are making the decisions. So, um, great job on everybody's part. Again, five million, seven hundred twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty cents is a lot of money that the taxpayers, uh, are getting back. And that's what I tell them in DC, is I want some of our money back. It's not money that they, that, that, uh, we don't deserve. We sent it there, we should get some of it back for our community, so, uh, good job. Anybody have any questions or comments for Connor?
Same thing, I'd like to give you kudos, you guys, for your hard work. It was just exciting to know we received a grant, because last time we didn't. So it sounds better to say, we almost got six million bucks that the taxpayers did not have to, uh, pay or shell out. So we're very appreciative of your work, and super excited. I feel so much better about getting those fifteen firefighters and getting funded, and I'm less stressed. I'm gonna sleep good tonight.
We were excited to see it come across in the email, for sure. We were in this weird kind of place waiting, 'cause they hadn't funded anybody yet, and it was supposed to, it should've already started, and so we're in this kind of weird space, and the email came across, and, you know, there's a little bit of relief, you know? We, we weren't successful last year, and felt like we should've been, you know? We, we were confident in the, we met all of the guidance, and we were doing exactly what they said we needed to be doing with the money, and we met the financial need, and we, we had all the things that we needed, we felt like, and then we didn't get it. And so it was a little.
I know why.
A little frustrating, but.
And kudos to our mayor, and deputy mayor pro temp. Good work at those, uh, meetings and conventions.
You know, another, uh, thank you goes to our interim city manager, Mark, you know? He could've said, we can't do this, and it wasn't gonna happen, and, uh, you know, we'd had all kinds of budget issues, but he put it in there, he made it work, and, uh, so we're, we're.
And in this climate, it was, I kid you not, we are, we are touched in a very good way.
Yeah.
Because I don't think anyone knows that Terrell got two fired, a truck. We got two fire trucks. You need to understand that when I went to the national meeting to tout the fact that we got two trucks, only to find out that everyone else didn't get theirs, I did not make my presentation. I was very joyful, but everyone else was throw hands angry. It was so, you guys did a real good job, all of you. Rayland, Mark, Dustin. It was so, you guys did a real good job, all of you, Rayland, Mark, Dustin.
Good on ya.
The chief, you know, when we were discussing the fire trucks, he came and he told us, hey, you know what, we can get a deal on a second truck if we go ahead and order it, and if he hadn't have brought that forward, we'd be waiting on another truck. And y'all were, y'all were smart enough, wise enough to listen to him, and like you said, I'm, you talked to mayors who, you know, they're waiting.
They were, they were waiting. Woo, yeah, they're still.
Good job all the way around.
I was very excited. When I was reviewing the agenda, prepping for tonight, this was the item that I got really excited about, so kudos to everyone. And I will have to say, I did tout at two-day, the fact that we received two fire trucks. And not only that, but I gave kudos to, and I was talking to some fire chiefs in the area, and I said, you know, our council has been great, in my opinion, because we have provided two new fire trucks, we've continued to increase salaries, we've gone from BLS to ALS, Advanced Life Support, and we've provided equipment, and I was very proud to say that, very excited for this grant. Then I said, I'd let them know that, I said, well, we're going to be pushing a little bit more, because we've asked for some more diversity in terms of, like, women, and backgrounds, maybe military, maybe students from, from different colleges that we're out and recruiting. So, I said, we're going to be asking for some in return as well, but at the same time, I'm very excited to be able to support our fire department. Thank you.
All right, this is Resolution Number 224, I meant 2264. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve item 6.2 as presented.
Of a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Mayroni Velazquez, District Three, a second from Donna Renee Anderson, our deputy mayor pro temp, District Two, to approve Resolution Number 2264 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and has voted as present. Our next item on the agenda is 6.3, Discuss and Consider Resolution Number 2263, authorizing issuance of a notice of intent that the City of Terrell, Texas intends to establish tax increment reinvestment zone number six, City of Terrell, TERZ number six, pursuant to the Tax Increment Financing Act, Texas Tax Code and Chapter 311, 311, for the City of Terrell, Texas, authorizing the city secretary to publish a notice of public hearing and a newspaper of general circulation in the area, and on the city website, and providing an effective date. Rayland.
So, real quick, if y'all don't mind, what I'm going to kind of do is group together the next three items, so you have three resolutions, Resolution 2263, 6.5, and 6.6. This is simply to call a public hearing to consider a TERZ application. So, there is no action other than to set the public hearing for October the 21st. Resolution 2263 is the proposed TERZ number six. This is more.
So, Rayland, before we begin, let me, let me make sure that we've got the right item that we're discussing. We're going to discuss 6.3, 6.4, and 6.5?
Yes.
So, let me also discuss and consider Resolution Number 2265, authorizing issuance of a notice of intent that the City of Terrell, Texas intends to establish tax increment reinvestment zone number seven, City of Terrell, TERZ number seven, pursuant to the Tax Increment Financing Act, Texas Tax Code, Chapter 311, for the City of Terrell, Texas, authorizing the city secretary to publish a notice of public hearing and a newspaper of general circulation in the area, and on the city website, and providing an effective date. Don, can I do all three? Or do we need to do one? Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Separately, yeah, but I want, if we're going to discuss them, I need to.
I was just trying to explain what all of them were.
All right. Then also Discuss and Consider Resolution Number 2266, authorizing issuance of a notice of intent that the City of Terrell, Texas intends to establish tax increment reinvestment zone number eight, City of Terrell, TERZ number eight, pursuant to the Tax Increment Financing Act, Texas Tax Code, Chapter 311, for the City of Terrell, Texas, authorizing the city secretary to publish a notice of public hearing and a newspaper of general circulation in the area, and on the city website, and providing an effective date. Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, I guess I did not simplify that at all. What you have are three, yeah, are three separate resolutions, but it is to simply call the public hearing. So, the public hearing will be called on October the 21st, and that is also when you would have the opportunity to accept or deny the first reading of the ordinance, which would essentially create the TERZ. TERZ number six, which is listed first, is what is commonly known as the Terranova property. TERZ number seven, you have an existing development agreement, and a part of that development agreement is that we did agree to create a TERZ for what is commonly known as Evening Star. And TERZ number eight is the same situation where we do have a signed development agreement with Hillside, and part of that agreement was that we would create a TERZ. So, I will let you know, the reason that we're bringing all three of these to you right now is because we went back and reviewed existing development agreements. We wanted to make sure that we, we can meet our end of the deal and our development agreements. TERZ, this, the commonly known as Terranova, was a request for a new TERZ district, and so we wanted to make sure when we went in and calculated the percentage of land and the percentage of property value within our TERZ, that we were still able to accommodate those existing development agreements. So, these three public hearings and the three ordinances that you will have on October 21st, you'll have two that have existing development agreements, and then you will also have TERZ number six, which is Terranova, and you will have that development agreement to consider as well. So, this is just to call the public hearing on October the 21st.
Does anyone object to having a public hearing? Hearing none, let's do Resolution Number 2263 first. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Donna Renee Anderson, our deputy mayor pro temp, District Two, a second from Mayroni Velazquez, District Three, to approve Resolution Number 2263 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and has voted as present. Our next item on the agenda, Discuss and Consider Resolution 2265, again, calling for a public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Donna Renee Anderson, our deputy mayor pro temp, District Two, a second from Mayroni Velazquez, District Three, to approve Resolution Number 2265 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and has voted as present. Our next item on the agenda is to Discuss and Consider Resolution Number 2266. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Of a motion, is there a second? We have a motion from Donna Renee Anderson, our deputy mayor pro temp, District Two, a second from Stephanie Holmes-Thomas, District Four, to approve Resolution Number 2266 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and has voted as present. Our next item on the agenda is 6.6, Discuss and Consider Ordinance Number 3153, an ordinance of the City of Terrell, Texas, amending Appendix One Fee Schedule, Section Two, library fees and charges to, of the revised code of ordinances of the City of Terrell, Texas, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. I don't see Rebecca here. Oh. Go ahead.
Part of Rebecca will be played by me this evening. She was feeling under the weather, so we sent her home.
Gotcha.
So, ordinance number 3153 will amend library fees. This is doing two things. First, what it's doing is it's doing small increases to the fees of our, of our existing fees. For example, if you will look at, if you happen to look at the ordinance, it talks about irreparable items. The replacement cost in the old ordinance was cost plus $3 processing fee, it's gone to cost plus $5 processing fee. It's just a slight adjustment in our fees to adjust for increases in our costs. That's the majority of the ordinance that is in front of you this evening. The other thing that is in this ordinance that I want to draw attention to is library cards. As we went through the budget process, there was discussion about the amount of money that we receive from the county being less going forward, or potentially being less going forward, and we had discussed with council the possibility of charging for library cards for individuals that were not residents of Terrell. Terrell residents would continue to see, receive their library card and access for free, and we had talked about charging Kaufman County residents a fee, and then residents for outside of Kaufman County a larger fee, because we do receive some level of support from Kaufman County. The one thing that I'm going to ask that when you make your motion this evening, is to make it as presented, with the adjustment that the fees for Kaufman County residents that are on here are, reflect $25. These are, when we, we made a proposal to council, I believe it was $20 and $30, we came back with $25 and $35, we reevaluated again, and when we finally brought forth the adopt, the budget for you all to adopt, it was based on Kaufman County resident paying $30, and residents outside Kaufman County paying $50. So, that's what the numbers in the budget were based on, so if you would make the motion this evening to include the Kaufman County resident being $30, and the residents outside Kaufman County being $50, that's the adjustment that we'd like to make this evening to the ordinance. But everything else that is here, again, is, other than the addition of the library card fees, are minor adjustments to our costs based on the cost of providing this.
All right, council, so, our consideration would be ordinance number 3153 with our Kaufman County residents paying $30, and our residents outside of Kaufman County paying $50. Is there a motion on ordinance number 3153? Well, does anybody have any questions for Mark first? None? Okay, is there a motion on 6.6? Got a motion from Mayroni Velazquez, District Three, a second from Stephanie Holmes-Thomas, District Four, to approve ordinance number 3153 as presented with the changes of Kaufman County residents paying $30 annually, and residents outside of Kaufman County paying $50. Is there any further discussion? Annually.
I'm just super excited that we can keep the library cards for our citizens free, and I did not realize the utilization from Kaufman County residents, and increased utilization from even outside the county. I think this is the right thing to do, as we preserve the fees for our, for our citizens. I'm excited about this, and I think it's the right thing.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and has voted as present. Our next item, council, is there a consent agenda? These are items 7.1, 7.2, 7.3, 7.4, 7.5, and 7.6. We may consider them all together, or if you need, we can pull one off. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
I have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion from Donna Renee Anderson, our deputy mayor pro temp, District Two, a second from Stephanie Holmes-Thomas, District Four, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and has voted as present. At this time, we'll adjourn into executive session in accordance with Section 551 of the Texas Government Code to discuss the following. Section 551.071, consultations with attorneys. Section 551.074, personnel matters. Section 551.087, deliberations regarding economic development negotiations. We are now in executive session. If you would. We are now in executive session. If you would...
Are we on?
Okay.
All right. At this time, we will reconvene into regular session and consider action, if any, on items discussed in executive session. Are there any motions?
Yes, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2267 authorizing the interim city manager to negotiate terms and bring to the city council for consideration a development agreement with Westwood Residential Land Company for the proposed Westwood multifamily residential development.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Donna Renee Anderson, our deputy mayor pro temp, District 2, a second from Stephanie Holmes-Thomas, District 4, to approve Resolution 2267 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries an antivoto as present. Our next item on the, or is there any other motions?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2268 authorizing the interim city manager to negotiate and to bring to the city council for consideration a development agreement with, is that NM10 Terra LLC for the Terra Nova development.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Stephanie Holmes-Thomas, District 4, a second from Donna Renee Anderson, deputy mayor pro temp, District 2, to approve Resolution 2268 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries an antivoto as present. Are there any other motions?
Motion to approve Resolution 2269 authorizing the interim city manager to negotiate terms and bring to city council for consideration a development agreement and memorandum of understanding with Terra Lease Housing Associates. Aye for one limited partnership for Terra family apartment project.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Mayroni Velazquez, District 3, a second from Donna Renee Anderson, deputy mayor pro temp, District 2, to approve Resolution 2269 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries an antivoto as present. We are now adjourned.